Okay.
Yep.
All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Our first business is approval of the minutes of October 21st. Can I have a motion to approve those?
Removed.
In a second. I had two moves.
Okay, I'll sec-
Okay, thank you. All in favor, Julia?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
And Kelly, aye. Thank you. Okay, let's go to reports for the school committee. Dr. Antonucci.
I'm gonna pass tonight. You're gonna be hearing a lot from me.
Okay. Dr. Klingerman?
I just have some, something brief. We just had a town hall meeting with the Ducksbury staff today just to go over, just checking in with everyone how they're doing with the hybrid learning and to make some announcements. And one of the things that we wanted to do was provide some raffle items to our teachers just to boost morale. And so I just wanted to thank a few Ducksbury businesses that were really generous in making some donations. So French Memories, Bee Home, Beehive Salon, and The Strand Boutique were kind enough to give a small donation of a few items that were fun to be able to raffle off to the staff today. So we're just really fortunate in Ducksbury to have great local businesses that are so supportive of our schools. And I know it really brightened the teacher's day when we were able to give some of those small raffle items out. So thank you for that.
Excellent, thanks. That's fun. Um, let's see, Katie Blake, Finance.
So I'm gonna pass tonight as well.
Okay, thanks Katie. Student rep? Still no? Okay. And then for me, I just want to acknowledge that we are in receipt of a letter from Ducksbury parents asking for a return in full time. And we obviously have been discussing this and we spent a lot of time on it in our October 21st meeting. And I'm sure parents will want to speak tonight, so we'll address that at at public comment. But my two cents, the state is trending in the wrong direction right now. Brookline teachers are about to go on strike. Marshfields had to close down a school. So I applaud our staff, our teachers, our administrators. And I know that the tone of the letter was extremely respectful and acknowledging that our teachers are putting in 150%. So thank you for that. And we will, we will continue to assess our return to school model. And right now, the hybrid is what is working the best. So thank you. Okay. Budget presentation. Take it away.
Okay, just bear with me. I'm going to share my screen. There we go. Okay, I think you can all see that, right?
Yeah.
Be good. I am going to just give me one sec. I'm gonna minimize. Sorry about that. I'm just, I'm realizing when this records the, the panel, like I can see you on a panel, but it's showing up on the recording. So I'm gonna try to minimize it, but it makes it a little hard for me to to see reaction. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, just so you know, I'm gonna minimize my screens. I'm not gonna be able to see you at all. And so holler or something if you need to get my attention. Does that sound good?
Sure, sounds great.
So I'm going to, um, I'm gonna kick this off tonight. And then I'm gonna turn it over to Katie and then Danielle. And then Katie and I will come back at, at the end to kind of wrap things up. Sorry, I've just changed my mind about this panel because I can't see. All right, so before I start, I just wanna say out loud, you know, the, the preparation of the budget document, you know, is really a multi-month process. I've been here now four years. And so the model, our model is really familiar to a lot of people. It's very consistent year to year. And I think it's really easy to understand. It's built for the, it's built for the layperson to understand kind of what's happening and try to tell a story about the budget. It's broken up into three sections. It's like an executive summary. And for the last couple of years, I've done that in a, really in a slide deck, a PowerPoint or a Google Slide presentation. This is sort of more of an infographic approach. But then there's several financial exhibits. And then there's, you know, 30 or so pages of line item detail. So basically, there's something for everyone in, in the budget. And you know, everything that is made available to the school committee is also available for public consumption. Probably by the end of the day tomorrow, everything will be up on the, on the website, under the School Committee tab, Fiscal Year 22 Budget. And I'll also, I will push, I will push out the budget with our all district, all district message. So people have it in front of them. But I just want to say, I think, you know, engagement's, engagement's important. Getting informed is important. And transparency is important. So I just want to make sure that people have access to information if they want it. So with that being said, I'll move on. Whoops. So this budget cycle is gonna be challenging. We were given a guideline, and I'll come back to this with some context. We were given a guideline by the town of 0% meaning submit a level funded budget, okay, a 0% increase over the prior fiscal year, fiscal year 21. I want to just take a moment to provide a definition. So, because we'll talk about these and I don't want them to be confused. Level funded is what I'm talking about on this page, and that is a 0% increase, as I said, over fiscal year 21. We're also gonna talk about something called the Level Services Budget. And a Level Services Budget is basically the amount of money we need next year to provide the same level of service, hence the term, that we're providing this year. Okay, and that, and those two numbers are wildly different. And we're gonna walk, we're gonna walk through that. But for this purpose, as my introduction, we are presenting to you tonight a budget of roughly $37.5 million. It is a 0% increase over fiscal year 21. It leads to, unfortunately, the elimination of 18.6 FTE. And FTE, the definition is below, is Full Time Equivalency Personnel. So a full-time teacher, for example, is 1.0 FTE. A half-time teacher would, would be 0.5 FTE and so on and so forth. So you'll see here that this budget that we're gonna go through tonight, we lose 11.9 teachers, 4.7 support staff, that includes instructional assistants and some other support staff, social worker, custodian, for a total of 18.6. So it's, it's, it's gonna be, like I said, a challenging budget season unless, unless something changes. But again, we'll come back to that to provide a little more context about the process. My goodness, I'm sorry. So just some commentary to introduce it. Obviously, with an 18.6 reduction, it's pretty obvious, this budget will not be adequate to, to, to support even our core services. Right? We're all about teaching and learning. And you know, we have to, we have to open the doors in, in September. And now this budget really doesn't, doesn't meet our needs and doesn't really kind of meet our expectations. I'd also say it's not gonna meet the community's expectations. It is not commensurate with the community's expectation. Ducksbury actually demands, I would say, and certainly deserves a high-quality, top-tier education. This particular budget is not commensurate with those expectations. As I say here, you know, under the best of times, and the best of times, best of circumstances, 0% guideline would be difficult. But it's really exacerbated. It's much more difficult because we were, it comes on the heels of a, of a very modest, a 1.5, 2% increase in, in fiscal, fiscal year 21, which was significantly below a level service budget. And so it sort of makes it that much more challenging. And I'd also say, we've had a generally underfunded budget for a long time here in Ducksbury. And we can talk about, we can talk about why in a bit. So, you know, it's just more challenging than ever this year. And I'd say, you know, our foundation isn't that strong. This is just one measure, but Ducksbury's per pupil expenditure, and this, this, this metric is the only apples-to-apple metric that is available in the state to compare school district spending. Our per pupil expenditure ranks us 183rd out of 325 districts in the Commonwealth. And it's below the state average by a significant margin. Now, you know, it doesn't maybe seem significant when you see those two numbers on paper, but the difference between our per pupil and the state average per pupil is roughly $1.9 million. Right? So said another way, even if we were at state average per pupil, we'd have $1.9 million more in, in resources. So it is significant. And it's just, I don't want to belabor that point. I don't want to make any excuses, but it's just, it's just kind of a fact that I like to come back to every once in a while. And I just say this before we kind of launch into this. We, it's, you know, dangerous, I think, to talk about budget cuts in the abstract. Those cuts are real people. There are teachers and support staff and custodians. And, you know, any decision we make during the budget process, whether it's cuts in personnel, or cuts to supplies and materials or equipment, it has a very direct impact on our classrooms. And as I say here, a direct impact on our ability to provide this expect, the education that our community demands. And so it's challenging. And so, you know, that's, that's kind of our, kind of our, our starting point. I'll move on. I referenced this notion of a Level Services Budget. And I've, and this, this slide will look, some version, but will look familiar to you and people who kind of paid attention to my process over the last four years. But we start every year by building the Level Services Budget, right? We need to know what it's gonna take to provide that level of service next year that we're providing this year, right? I mean, it's just a good exercise. And we calculate that by taking the current year budget and then adjust that budget according to several factors. One is sort of actual spending patterns, right, our, our budget history. We look at projections for new expenditures. And as I say here, also some, in some, in some cases, projection for known savings. We, you know, Katie and I especially, then our central office team, Danielle, Pat, we review every single line item in this budget. There's about 400 line items. But the reality is that what drives the budget increase every year is, is pretty consistent. And I don't mean in Ducksbury. I just mean in every, in every school district, really in the country. And those drivers typically include what I list here. Salary increases, mostly due to contractual obligations, which we'll give you more details about in a minute. We actually, in, in the, the known savings category, we do look at savings due to projected retirements, right? We always build in a negative budget driver with the expectation that there'll be a number of retirements. We look at things like enrollment, you know, could, could we save any money in salaries due to enrollment changes? Special ed tuition, special ed transportation, vocational ed transportation, vocational ed tuition drive the budget. Operations and maintenance, we have several service contracts and supply and equipment needs, utility costs, electricity, heating, fuel, that kind of thing. And then we also have to look at our, our revenue sources. And we have about $3 million in revenue coming into this budget. We need to kind of look at the patterns of those. Are there any fluctuations, fluctuations that would drive the budget? So again, we start the process every year by building this budget. Right? And I'm kind of giving something away from a slide, a couple of slides, but that number actually, that, that, so our Level Service Budget, we would need over a million dollars just to provide a level service budget for next year. And we're presenting a zero tonight. Okay, so that's sort of the, you'll, you'll see as we go through this presentation, that's the exercise, is how to bridge that gap. Okay, so I'm gonna turn it over to Katie now, and she's gonna walk you through how the Level Service Budget is calculated. So Katie. Oops, see, there we go. Oh my goodness.
I'm gonna talk about the specific details on how we built our Level Services Budget for fiscal year 22. So as John had said, we always start with our final fiscal year 21 budget. And you can see that final number there at the top, the 37, 498, 353. And then from that number, we have several high-level categories that will, we're seeing either a, a positive increase to the budget, or it could have a corresponding decrease to what we think the overall budget impact will be for fiscal year 22. So I'm just gonna walk through the high-level detail. And as John had mentioned earlier in the presentation, we have the line-level details, so over 400 lines of exactly what makes up these numbers in these high-level categories. And we have that information available here in Central Office. So and I'm always more than happy to walk through any of the details of those numbers. So our first high-level category here that we're seeing an overall increase for fiscal year 22, and certainly the largest increase that we see in our budget year over year is that for our salary increases. So that's an increase in our salaries, and that's district-wide. So that's our teachers, our support staff, our administrators, our custodians. And that's due to any contractual obligations we see. So any of the steps that the teachers may make some lane changes, any of the cost of living increases that we have in our contractual obligations, as well as any of our self-contracted employees. And so that budget impact for fiscal year 22, we're projecting is over $1,000,000. So that 1, 0, 5, 0, 0, 43. And then for fiscal year 22, we're also expecting that we're going to see a pretty significant increase in our, our out-of-district tuition. And so with that tuition increase, this number represents both a percentage increase across our out-of-district, to, out-of-district providers, as well as one very targeted increase that we're also seeing for fiscal year 21. And of course, because we're building this budget based off of our current fiscal year's budget, we have to incorporate that increase into fiscal year 22. So that out-of-district special ed tuition increase is that 2, 44, 686. So we're also expecting to see a decrease in one of the offsets that we receive in here. So any decrease to any of our offsets, and an offset could be some of the grant funding that we receive, any of the revenue that we may bring in from any of our tuition-based programs or our fee-based programs. So a reduction in an offset has the same implication to the budget as an increase in our expenses. So for fiscal year 22, we are expecting that our special education circuit breaker offset will be reduced. So in fiscal year 21, the offset to the operating budget is $875,000. In fiscal year 22, it's being reduced to $800,000. So we're taking that $75,000 as a budget impact. We also are anticipating that we'll have a small increase in some of the expenses in our operations and maintenance categories. So a small increase to our heat, energy, and light expenditures. And that will be partially offset by a decrease in our water expenses. And then lastly, in the increase category, we have, we will be seeing an increase in our school bus transportation costs for fiscal year 22. And that is just the yellow bus transportation that is used to transport our students within the district. And that overall cost for fiscal year 22 in a level service budget is just about $1.7 million. And so that increase from fiscal year 21 into fiscal year 22 has an overall budget impact of 66, 394. And so very similarly, in the Level Service Budget, we also look at some of the expenses that we do anticipate will decrease. And so the first, the first category in our decrease is our vocational education tuition. And that's actually a net increase in both the tuition and transportation expense. And that's just due to some of the students that are seniors in fiscal year 21 will, of course, be aging out for fiscal year 22. And then we've also had a number of students that have moved out of district. So when those students do move out of district, their tuition expense follows them to their new home district. We're also, as we had mentioned previously, taking into account some savings from retirement. So this year, and this has been the practice for the, the past several budget cycles, we are projecting savings from five known retirements. So for each retiree, we are saying that it will save approximately the $30,000 per person. And I just want to make a point that in past years, at this point in the budget cycle, we have known that we've had five retirees. And this year, we do not have five total retirees yet. So that number certainly could, could change in the upcoming months. So that number is, is still a little bit of a wild card. But in order to be consistent, we left it at that 150 overall savings for fiscal year 22. So in our salary category, we're also seeing a decrease in our substitute teacher line and our salary column change budget. So that's a decrease just from fiscal year 21 over to fiscal year 22. And in fiscal year 21, we certainly had to make some adjustments. We've had a number of needs for some sub-coverage, class coverage. It's for fiscal year 21, it's been a really unique and challenging year. So we did have to make some adjustments, but in 22, we did take into account that it could certainly go back to more of a a rate or an overall budget need as has been seen in past fiscal years. And so as we detailed in the second slide that was presented to you, the budget that's being presented tonight has an overall decrease of 18.6 total FTE. And so 1.3 of that decrease, we are showing as a decrease due to our, or in our Level Services Budget. So we're just saying with the same student population that we have this year, carrying them forward into next year, that we could provide the same level of service with 1.3 less FTE. And that's giving us a, a budget savings of 65, 340. And then the last category that we will see, a slight budget savings would be our special education transportation. So it is unlike typically for a special education. So we did have that increase in our out-of-district tuition, and that was for the same number of students. It was just due to an increase in the tuition rate at those specific placements. But for our transportation budget, we were able to reallocate some of our transportation routes with our contracted service providers. And we do think that this, this will reflect a more accurate transportation budget for out-of-district students.
What's that, Katie?
Yep. And so all of that information being said, as we took all of the different moving pieces and created our Level Service Budget, we then, knowing that the town guideline was to create a level funded budget, had to move from the 2.8% increase that we're showing in Level Services and then make resulting cuts to equal that overall increase of over $1 million, which of course would equal that 2.8% reduction from Level Services. And so what is the cost of doing this in schools? So it shouldn't be surprising for communities to see annual increases in the range of 3% to 5% if the district is to maintain the current quality. So in maintaining the current quality, when we talk about Level Services, certainly a range of 3% is, is consistent with maintaining quality of our current programs. And then in having the ability to continuously grow and improve, as part of the budget process last year for fiscal year 21, when we had presented our operating budget back in November, our initial round of operating budgets had a growth budget. And the budget that we had presented at that time was a 4.4% increase over fiscal year 20. So certainly consistent with an overall budget increase that would allow us to allocate resources to growing and improving the district. Schools are not typical businesses, and we have so many different costs that are fixed, legally mandated, or otherwise unavoidable. And a lot of those costs are the, are very similar to the costs that we just walked through in the Level Services Budget build. It's costs of providing tuition to any of our out-of-district students for special education and vocational. It's any of our utilities costs that we incur throughout the year. And it's, of course, that large salary expense that we, we have, which is primarily defined by our collective bargaining agreements. And so when we look at the school operating budget year over year, there really is very little discretionary spending. So when we're looking at making some major cuts or some drastic reductions to our operating budget, the cuts run fairly deep into our service delivery. And so why is there such little discretionary spending in schools? And this slide really gives some specific detail to the Ducksbury Public Schools and to the makeup of our operating budget. So approximately 82% of our school operating budget is made up of our salary expenses. And you could see that that was really by far the largest part of our increase that we'll see from fiscal year 21 over to fiscal year 22. So of the 412 full-time equivalent employees that we have in the district for fiscal year 21, 84% of those employees are compensated in accordance to their respective collective bargaining agreements. So their compensation is based on a combination of pay scales, which include wage steps, any of the cost of living increases, stipends, longevity payments, and other miscellaneous payments. And those collective bargaining agreements typically run the course of three years. So most of our bargaining agreements that we have district-wide, we go into the agreement for three years. A large portion of the remaining 18% of the budget is tied to multi-year contracts that we have across the district. So the 18% is what we call our general expense category. And of course, as we had mentioned previously, that's cost for transportation, whether it be yellow bus or our out-of-district transportation, utilities, trash, and others. So these contracts all have built-in year-over-year increases. And those increases typically range anywhere from 2% to 4%. And I also want to make the point that schools are very unique in the fact that we have to abide by mass general law when we go out to procure any of these different contracts for any of our general expenses. So based off of the threshold of what our spending is, we either have to go through a process of securing multiple bids. We may have to go out and receive any request for proposals, or we may have to go through a competitive bidding process. or we may have to go through a competitive bidding process. So we don't have the ability to just reach out to vendors and say, hey, we want you to provide this service for us and what price can you give us? We really are tied to um that procurement process so that we can abide by mass general law. And so in this last point here, um, we've mentioned it multiple times, but we do have some significant expenditures that are tied to our out of district special education as well as our vocational tuition payments. So our private special education tuition rates are set by the state. And in fiscal year twenty two, they'll increase by two point two six percent. So typically, we've seen our vocational tuition rates increase at anywhere from a range of two to three percent per year.
Before I um trip, I am sorry, I'm a mess with my mouse here, sorry. Um, before I transition, are there any questions about uh those introductory slides that we just went through?
No, thanks. I'm all set.
Okay, so thank you. Um, thank you, Katie. So I'm going to turn it over to Danielle in a moment, but I just want to talk a little a little bit about our process. And I think like any good process, you know, we we wanted to make sure we went into it with some guiding principles, um, you know, to help us prioritize uh either budget uh cuts or or budget adds, even though we didn't have any this year. And they're not, you know, they're pretty simple, but I want to I want to talk about them. Um, you know, primarily, we wanted to avoid cutting full programs to the extent possible. Um, you know, every program in the uh in the district is important to some group of students. And to the extent that we could save uh the full program we we wanted to, it's not always possible. Secondly, you know, sustainability is really important to me. I think a lot of, a lot of folks jump quickly to um cutting supplies, cutting materials, cutting equipment, uh sort of stripping stripping bare the non-salary accounts. And um, it's just not sustainable. Um, uh unfortunately, you know, we still need to open the doors in September. Uh, we still have the same population of students. We still have the same needs. And so that's why, you know, when you develop a cut budget like this, um, it's really personnel-heavy. You know, because, you know, unfortunately, that that would be sustainable, right? We'd have fewer personnel. Um, but we'd be able to actually continue our educational program, right? We would have supplies, we'd have textbooks, uh, materials, that type of thing. So when I talk about sustainability, that's kind of what I have in mind. Virtually every one of our staffing cuts that Danielle is going to go over will lead to class size increases. So as we thought about making personnel cuts, uh, we we did want to protect the primary grades as much as possible. You know, our our early learners are really the most vulnerable. So to the extent we could, we wanted to protect the primary grades. And then finally, and again, fairly simple, but uh we wanted to make sure that no one school or no one department and no one grade level bore um kind of the the brunt uh of the cuts. And so we tried to spread. It's not quite equitable, um, but we did try to spread out um the cuts you know, across all schools and and departments and grade levels. So I am going to just introduce a a quick summary slide. Danielle is going to run through these. Um, but here is the breakdown uh of our FTE reduction, our personnel reduction. You'll see here that the 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 FTE cuts from all four schools, um, plus special education department, and then some district-wide positions, total seventeen point three FTE for a total of one million fifty nine fifteen. Remember that one million fifty nine fifteen was that gap from level services to level funded, right? So a million fifty down to zero. And I'm just going to say this one more time, so to not to avoid any confusion, but Katie already mentioned it. The total budget reduction, the total uh FTE reduction in this particular budget is actually eighteen point six. One point three came from the level services budget, Katie just mentioned. And so in in the delta seventeen point three came um in our exercise to cut to level funding. Okay, so I just don't and I put I put some explanation down at the bottom of these slides to make sure that if anybody's reading it that carefully and gets confused, they understand where we're coming from. So that's the summary. And now I am going to turn it over to Danielle for some time to um uh review the cuts in a little more detail. Danielle.
Okay, thank you. And so I have the hard task of talking about what these cuts, what the implications of these cuts are at each school. And um John mentioned earlier that these cuts represent real people. And when we had our full faculty meeting earlier today, and we mentioned that there would be seventeen point three FTE cut across the district. Um, it was heartbreaking to see the faces of some of the staff members who actually winced when they heard that number for the first time. Um, and I know many of our teachers are participants in the school committee call right now. And so I don't want to seem callous when I go through the implications of these cuts, because these are cuts that we don't want to have to make. But with lean budgets, year after year, we've been left to make some really hard decisions. And we don't take it for granted that these um, the words on these slides have implications for real people that we know and value and work with every day. So starting with Chandler School, um, we would be looking at several cuts. Um, one would be to a grade one teacher. John, I don't know if you need to um advance the slide. Am I on? Yep. So if we looked at the Chandler cuts, um, the details of those would be one grade one classroom teacher. We look at the class size, uh, making these um recommendations. And we currently have one hundred and ninety-two kindergarten students with us. It was a rather large kindergarten class that we had this year. Um, we had twenty-five students who opted to leave Chandler School due to the implications for some of the remote and hybrid learning situations. So we have um twenty-five students that left the district either to do homeschool programs or to attend private school. Many of the students who left said they would be returning in grade one. So if we were to move from grade um ten grade one classes to nine grade one classes, we would have a class size range of twenty-one to twenty-four students per class to start the year. So if all twenty-five of those students returned, we'd be closer to the twenty-four first grade students to start the year. Um, typically, we do get a lot of new first grade students just in general. So that number, that twenty-five potential is plus or minus. It could be thirty, it could be thirty-five, it could be twenty. Um, we really can't predict. Um, we also made the difficult decision to look at reducing one reading specialist at Chandler School. Um, this is not an ideal reduction. We currently have three reading specialists that each have a full caseload of students that they support. I providing extra um reading phonics, um, some of those early literacy skill um deficits that some of our students have that we're able to address and get students back on track. So we're going to have to really look at the threshold of how we qualify students to receive extra support if we were to have one less reading specialist. And certainly, we would um look to see an increase in our small group size. So if you're working with two or three students, those those small groups might be a little bit larger with one less reading specialist. Also for Chandler School, we're looking to reduce um a halftime library assistant. And so our library media media specialist sees twenty-eight students per week where they cover a full curriculum. So she's um doing a lot of work with the digital literacy, um, with some of our digital citizenship work and showing students some really valuable skills and their library special. And so reducing that library assistant will have an impact in that we work really hard to provide students with book circulation as well as curated book lists for um teachers who are doing different units in their classrooms. So we we would have an impact there. Okay, next slide. So when we talk about class size, um, we always want to make the point that we often minimize the implications of class size, saying, oh, what's the big deal between going from twenty-one students to twenty-five students? And so people often think back to when they were in school, twenty to thirty years ago. And we can't emphasize enough that schools of today are not the schools that we were in twenty or thirty years ago. Um, just some off the top of our head, some of the changes. There were no national or state curriculum standards. Schools had the um luxury of being able to develop their own local curriculum. Um, teachers had a lot more flexibility with what topics they could teach. There were no high-stakes tests that teachers needed to worry about, having students prepared for as early as March in the school year or even earlier. Students with special needs unfortunately were not integrated in our public schools. We may have seen um some students partially integrated, or many times we had students in separate classrooms or even separate schools totally. And most instruction was provided in a lecture-style format where a teacher was able to stand in front of the room with one textbook and one assignment, and there just wasn't a lot of differentiating, either you got it or you didn't. Today, uh, the students of today are very different even in the last ten years. Uh, we have national and state curriculum standards that is that are very rigorous and and far-reaching. MCAS is mandated all at all grade levels, and the MCAS tests, um, I we can all tell you are not easy. And we look at the test that those students in third grade are expected to be able to do independently with no support from from their teachers. It's it's just really challenging. Now, luckily, we have students with special needs integrated into all of our classrooms. We have English language learners that are fully integrated, and we have students that come into our classrooms not speaking any English. And we're able to integrate them so that we're seeing great gains with them year year after year. Um, instruction is interactive. We have flexible grouping groupings of students. We have tons of supplemental materials and resources and uh assignments that we're able to differentiate to meet the needs of our students. And we can't say enough that the academic and social emotional needs of our students are so important. Students of today have levels of anxiety, stress, and depression that um we've never seen before. And so we do um so much work with social emotional learning skills in our classroom on top of all of the content area learning that goes on so that we can make students safe and comfortable in our classrooms. So when we're looking at class size, it's important to remember, um, at the elementary level, the elementary teachers are really magicians that are responsible for teaching all content areas, math, reading, writing, speaking and listening, phonics, science, social studies, and then we have an entire framework for digital literacy and computer science that are taught by our classroom teachers. On top of this, they're juggling, meeting all of the social and emotional um needs of their students and making sure they're providing opportunities for students to have explicit instruction and turn-taking and relationship building and advocating for themselves in a in a different environment. Um, we know that students who feel safe and supportive um do best in their learning and want to come to school. So we spend a lot of time focusing on that social and emotional piece. Relationship building is critical, and it's just easier and more um it's just uh more personalized when we have fewer students um to be able to get to know our students on a personal level and how they learn in all those different content areas. So that's really important. Individualized instruction is more efficiently facilitated in smaller class size. And we want to make sure teachers want to meet the need needs of every single one of their students. And there's a huge difference between a class of nineteen first graders and a class of twenty-four first graders. And so we can't emphasize enough that these class size implications um have great uh meaning to the teachers when they see that there might be one less teacher at at their grade level. So moving on to Alden School, we had to make the difficult decision of um looking to see where we may be able to make some reductions. Um, and when you have lean budgets year after year, there's simply nowhere else to look. So we had to make the hard decision of examining what it would be to for an impact if we were to have one less teacher per grade level at Alden School. So what that would mean, um, one less third-grade teacher. We currently have one hundred and eighty students entering third grade. Um, again, with that potential of eighteen students returning to Duxbury Schools, plus or minus. So going from ten to nine grade three classes, we'd be looking at a range of twenty to twenty-two students per class to start the year. Their grade is um a big transition year from students out of Chandler School into Alden School, and that is an MCAS year. And so um, there there is a ton of learning that goes on in third grade. Um, we're asking students to not just be decoding any longer. We're asking them to read to to learn with the comprehension expectations, the writing expectations, and the ability to um be independent enough to take the MCAS test on computer for the first time in grade three. In grade four, we would be looking to reduce one teacher. Um, so if we have one hundred and ninety-nine students right of as of today scheduled to enter grade four with a potential of ten students returning, we would have a class size range of twenty-two to twenty-three students to start the school year. And in grade five, we'd be looking again, class of twenty-two hundred students entering grade five, seven students left temporarily to um either do homeschooling or other options this year. And so we'd be looking at a class size range of twenty-two to twenty-three students per class to start the year. So none of these are ideal. And we we do have a lot of students moving in and out of Duxbury year after year, just naturally. Some families are moving in, some families are moving out. So you never know when you can have a bubble of, um, sometimes you just will get a big group of fourth-grade students that are coming in just due to luck where um we could see, we could see twenty students come in in grade four, and we'd be looking on at some larger class sizes. So we're always a little bit nervous to start the year with um higher class size. Middle school is a little bit challenging. So I'm going to mention that um we have a team model at the middle school. And what that means is that if we have two teams per grade level in six, seven, and eight, we can't say that we're going to reduce one English teacher because we can't have sixty students in one class. So we have a lot less flexibility when it looks, when we are looking to make creative reductions at the middle school. So what ends up happening is that we're chipping away at some of the full-time equivalency of our teachers. And this is not ideal when it comes to taking point two, point four, point one here and there, because um it's just, it's, it makes the scheduling a lot more challenging, and there's a lot less flexibility when it comes to trying to accommodate student scheduling and what their interest areas are and keeping the class size low. And so I'll go through what these reductions would mean at the middle school level in a little bit more detail. So um the reduction of point two art teacher would um raise class size in our visual art and design class from twenty-two to twenty-four students. Um, and for visual art and design two from sixteen to twenty-two students. Um, the reduction of point four math teacher would um it would, this would be an impact due to enrollment decreases. So the class size would likely increase from the ideal eighteen to twenty student range that we aim for. We don't like, just because our students are a little bit older at the middle school, doesn't mean that learning in a classroom environment of closer to thirty students is um is ideal. So we do try to keep the class size in um manageable range. And so it's hard to predict, but we would be seeing an increase in our in that ideal range if we were to reduce that um point four math teacher. Currently, our music program, we have a choral accompanist who assists the music teachers during rehearsals as they prepare for concerts. Um, the music teachers are juggling very large groups of students, um, when they're, when they have their different groups before them. And so having that choral accompanist allows them to focus on the individual sections and um the music students and not have to worry about also doing that um, doing that piece of the work. But we would be um recommending that reduction. And also, um, point one FT of a music teacher, um, this would eliminate the non-performance music course option. Um, this typically runs with a um about twenty students who opt to not be in a music course that has a performance, which is um for various reasons. It's a really nice option that we are able to offer students. Um, so if we were not able to run that non-performance music option, those students would likely um join chorus or other musical groups, which would increase the group size in in whatever they opt into as a an alternative. Continuing with Duxbury Middle School, um, we'd be looking to reduce point two of a physical education teacher. This would be another one due to um enrollment decreases. We would um be able to accommodate this reduction with a minimal increase in the class size of the other PE classes. So that was one that was enrollment-driven. Um, health education, we'd be moving from one point two to one in health, and that would result in a small increase in our class size. But again, that was one um reduction that was a manageable um adjustment. Um, this year, we have in the budget a in an additional social worker at the middle school. We just see that this age level of student have um a lot of social and emotional needs that we um, we just see our guidance counselors and our um staff working miracles every day to be able to get to all the students that need support. Um, we have so many students that benefit from having um just individual time with their counselors. Um, we we see many students benefit from social skills groups and different opportunities to get some targeted instruction on this crucial age level where um friendships and emotional emotions and anxiety can be really challenging for our students to manage at the middle school level and having increased staffing in that social and emotional realm at the middle school, we know is a great benefit to our students. So not being able to fill this position is kind of disappointing and heartbreaking and it's part of our strategic planning initiative to best support our students' social emotional needs, especially at this crucial age level. So this, this is a tough one and we hope that we can keep this in mind when we are looking to increase and support our students down the road. Finally, we believe due to a slight decrease in enrollment that we'd be able to reduce the number of STEM tech ed sessions without a significant impact in the class size in those areas. So that was one additional enrollment recommendation. Finally, the high school, you'll see a pretty high number with the total recommendations of reductions at three hundred and twenty six thousand, six hundred and fifty eight. Unfortunately, the high school reductions took the brunt of our total because there's more flexibility with our course offerings. However, when we are work so hard to have a really great high school program with lots of choices for our students who all are coming from very different areas of interest, it's disappointing to see see cuts like this happening at our high school. This is not, this is not recommendation year after year to be cutting programs. We have so many ideas of additional course offerings and options we'd like to be adding. So this, the next few slides are the opposite of what we'd like to be presenting to you tonight. Reducing one English teacher would have us running two less grade nine classes, two less grade ten classes and we'd be able to offer two fewer senior half year electives. We'd see a range of enrollment in these classes from nineteen to twenty four, which again, when it comes to individualizing instruction, if you ask any teacher having a class of nineteen, what you can get to and how personalized you can get to having a class of twenty four, it's, it's a significant difference. Enrollment in half year electives, we'd see a rise in those courses from seventeen to twenty four students per class. Reducing one math teacher will cause us to run two less sections of grade nine geometry, two less sections of grade ten algebra two and we'd be reducing two junior senior elective. So we would see a class size increase and we'd be seeing less choices for some of those junior and senior elective classes that they enjoy and need. Reducing one point five FTE physical education teacher, we'd be eliminating a section of grade nine and ten health and wellness. A section of grade ten health and wellness and three sections of grade ten, eleven and twelve lifetime sports and project adventure. Based on what the students indicate they are interested in course enrollment. So reducing these, just again, kind of eliminate some of the flexibility and scheduling that we work really hard to accommodate students' first choice of classes and scheduling and these reductions impact that. We're also looking at one FTE science teacher. We would see an increase from seventeen to twenty five students in grade nine biology classes and twenty to twenty five students in grade ten chemistry courses, which are really challenging classes for the students that we, we see many students that need a lot of individualized support to be successful there. Continued with the high school, reducing a point five FTE social studies teacher would result in increase in class sizes from seventeen to twenty four students in our grade nine history classes. One less half year elective will be available for students in grades ten to twelve. And this reduction would also impact the availability of electives for high school students. And I believe Mr. Donovan said that about five hundred students take advantage of social studies department electives. They're very popular classes. The teachers work really hard to have engaging content and and it's just disappointing to see us not be able to offer the variety of courses that we have been able to offer our students in the past. We're talking about a reduction of point two in the world language department, which would be in the French area. So we would be combining two college sections into one section and we'd see an increase in class size in that section into thirty students. So that's twice as large as we'd like to see that, that course being offered to students. So we'd have fifteen students and we'd be moving to thirty students in that class. So definitely not ideal. And then the reduction of point two in the Mandarin program, we'd be compressing our Mandarin for college prep and honor students into one course together and we'd have to differentiate depending on what the students were taking the class as. And we'd also be compressing Mandarin five college prep and AP. So those students would be in one class together with a larger class size. We would be looking to reduce the library assistant, which is a really important position at the middle school and high school. They work on library circulation. They have fantastic resources in our DHS and DMS library. So many awesome books and collections that they're able to support teachers with being able to share some of these offerings with students. They are able to assist teachers with some clerical support such as with laminating poster making and other other ways to enhance the curriculum in the different content areas. Our library media specialists and library assistant work hard to do that. So we also provide some lunch supervision in the library, which we would no longer be able to accommodate. So that's another unfortunate reduction. I mentioned the choral accompanist when I was going through the middle school cuts. So that is a shared position for the middle and high school music students. So it would have an impact at both schools during their rehearsals. And finally, guidance counselors, we'd be reducing the number of per diem summer days that they're able to work. And I think many parents will be able to attest to the fact that they're reaching out to students are reaching out to their guidance counselors all the time in the summer and they look forward to being able to talk to the guidance counselors about anything going on, whether it's social, emotional or course planning or college prep or any of those things that our counselors bend over backwards to be able to assist families with. So having less availability to them will impact our families, our students and certainly the guidance counselor's ability to help everyone that they attempt to help. Finally, we had to make some tough choices in the special education department at looking to reduce to district wide instructional assistants. And so the impact of that would be that we would have a negative impact on the number of supported classes in the inclusion setting that we'd be able to offer for students to have support on their IEPs. We would see small group size increase by the number of students that the instructional assistants would be servicing at one time or the teachers would be servicing at one time. And having less supported classes would be more challenging with scheduling when we're looking at students that require support in their classes in the inclusion setting. So this cut would not be some, something that a student that has a one-on-one assigned to them would not be receiving their services. I think sometimes families with special education students get a little nervous that their child's IEP wouldn't be met. We would never be able to make, we would never recommend anyway that a cut would be made where an IEP wouldn't be met. But the implications are in our ability to schedule more flexibly, the classes that we're supporting and how those groups look that we are, we are using to meet students' IEP recommendations. So I believe that's my last slide of specific reductions.
Next Danielle, Katie's gonna take over now for a couple of slides.
John, can I ask a couple of questions on Danielle's presentation?
You're the chair.
Yay. So Danielle, do you see any legal implications on the reduction of the two IAs with the special ed?
No, because student IEP is mandated and we wouldn't be recommending a reduction. We wouldn't be able to do that. We wouldn't want to do that. And so IEP needs will be met. It just makes it more challenging and it gives less scheduling flexibility. But anyone that has an assigned instructional assistance support for their children would still receive that service.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
And I just had a couple of comments. The reduction of a science teacher and an increase in class sizes in biology, that's an MCAS year. That is a really hard class. So that, I mean, they're all pretty tragic, but that, that's going to be quite a hit. And then Danielle, and I think you said it perfectly, especially like social studies. If a student makes a schedule and then the classes are closed and they can't get in, it impacts the entire schedule. So they might have to redo their entire schedule based on numbers if they can't get into classes. Want, having one less option could be a whole redo.
Yeah. Could I, could I also ask about the potential reduction in elementary reading specialist at Chandler? How does that impact the implementation of the Orton Gillingham reading support program?
Well, we're currently, we currently have a district initiative to train all of our district's special education staff in Orton Gillingham, which we've been able to continue last year into this year. Through some strategic moves that we've been able to make with professional development and other, and looking at some of our flexibility with curriculum. But any student that has Orton Gillingham on their IEP or a specific reading structured phonics-based reading approach would still receive their service, but we service a number of students who are not on an IEP through extra support with reading. And so we are a Title I district and so we have students that are identified as being eligible for some extra support in reading and some of that does occur with our reading specialists. And so unfortunately, we'd be able to help fewer students that are having difficulty in an area. So what we had, what we have to do is rank order and prioritize our students who are most in need to make sure that our students most in need would be the ones receiving the support. But we really as a district believe in helping any student that's struggling, whether or not they're our lowest student in that grade level or whether there's somebody that is just having a particular targeted area of difficulty that a short-term intervention would help them with. And so unfortunately, with one less reading specialist, we're able to have fewer students serviced, but we would still be able to meet the Orton Gillingham needs either through us the other reading specialists or our special ed teachers who are working really hard this year and last year to get trained. So we have about eleven teachers, I believe, that are doing their Orton Gillingham practicum this year in the special ed department. So that expands that capacity. And we continue to have reading specialists who do already have that certification. And we have a new group of special education teachers that are starting year one of their Orton Gillingham training this year.
Great, thank you for that.
Katie.
So I'm going to review some of the reductions that we're proposing at the district level. And so these reductions are a combination of reducing some of our transportation increases to our offsets that we're seeing and then also some staffing reductions. So the first reduction that we're proposing is the reduction of one bus for our yellow bus transportation provider. So the implications of this will be that the bus routes will need to be extended in length. And they will need to, the bus routes will need to include fewer stops and potentially longer student walking distances. And so the buses only have a very short period of time in which they can go through the route and then transport the students to school. So with the reduction of one bus, we just have to make sure that we're doing, performing the routes efficiently. Which may just lead to the extension in length and the fewer stops. The reduction will also have a significant impact on the ability for the bus company. So we're transporting out our transportation services. And so they do a large portion of the routing and the bus assignments for us. And this will certainly impact their ability to make any modifications to the routes once they receive the registration information from us here at the business office before the start of school. We're also putting forth in an increase to our revenue offset. So increasing the utilization from our school lunch account as well as our special education tuition in account. And the total of that is eighty five thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty two. And so the implications of that, revenue offsets are not guaranteed from year to year. And they do definitely depend on a number of factors. And so as we saw with the reduction of the reimbursement that were for our circuit breaker reimbursement for fiscal year twenty two. It's definitely can be unstable and unpredictable, the amount of revenue that we're receiving in. So the, of course, the increase to the overall utilization of these offsets have the same impact as lowering an expense line item. So as we increase the offsets, we're essentially lowering the over expense that we have to cover with our operating budget. And so as I had mentioned, revenue is, is definitely volatile and it's not guaranteed from year to year. So some of the staffing reductions that we're seeing at the district level, we do have a one point oh FTE reduction from our operations and maintenance staff. So the reduction of that one point oh will absolutely add to an increase of eighteen hundred feet of cleaning space per employee. And our staff is currently responsible for over thirty two thousand square feet of cleaning space throughout the district. And so the recommendation is that the custodian ratio is between twenty eight thousand and thirty one thousand square feet per custodian for an acceptable level of school cleanliness. So certainly that thirty two thousand exceeds the recommendation. And so the staffing reductions will also significantly impact the ability to service both staff and students during our normal operating hours. So our custodial staff has really been so integral in having our students and our staff come back into the the classroom safely this year and they've done an amazing job really going through and disinfecting and cleaning throughout the district. They cover a large area in a lot of surfaces. And so we, we do anticipate that this reduction in operations and maintenance staff will have a fairly significant impact district wide. And then the last reduction we have here is a one point oh in our technology department staff. So recent reorganization, reorganization in the technology department yielded a net one point oh FTE staff reduction. And so we do anticipate that the overall savings will be thirty five thousand dollars. And that has helped us reach our overall targeted cuts.
Thanks Katie. So I'm going to run through the last slides and conclude. And I just want, I want to say though that going back to well, all these cuts really, especially about class size. You know, we're talking about next year. But then I think we just have to ask ourselves, then what? Right? So we're talking about having class size the elementary next year in the twenty four range, potentially more depending on the fluctuations in enrollment. Then what? Are we gonna have twenty seven the next year and thirty the year after? You know, we're not really going down the right path here. So I mean, I it, it's just, it's come to this, you know, for some reasons which I'll explain in a few moments, but you know, I think we collectively as a town need to stop stop looking at this as a short-term budget process and really start doing some strategic planning and some visioning about what the future should look like. So it just sort of struck me as Danielle was talking that we have, we have a tough road ahead. I'm gonna kind of shift gears altogether and just talk, kind of give some high level, kind of contextual information and kind of explain why we're here. You know, first off by saying, reminding everybody of our mission. We're through a significant strategic planning process a couple of years ago. I love our strategic plan. I would say it's going to be harder and harder to implement those strategic initiatives, given what we're talking about with our budgets. But our mission of the Dexter Public Schools is to provide every student, each student with the opportunity to achieve personal and academic excellence. And I'm not really sure that this budget and our history is going to allow us to do that forever. And what this chart is showing here is just budget history since fiscal year seventeen. Like this is seven years of data. I mean, it's significant. And you know, remind you what Katie said earlier, you know, that it takes approximately three percent, four percent just to maintain level services. And never mind talking about a growth budget, just to maintain level, maintain level services. And the average annual increase over the last seven fiscal years is only two point three three percent. And that's, that's a significant, that's a significant difference. And you know, I, I just want to say, you know, to the layperson, That's a significant difference. And you know, I I just wanna say, you know, to the, to the layperson. A percent uh seems insignificant or inconsequential. Um and I, and I love to remind folks what a percent means in a school department budget. You know, a percent, one percent of our budget is roughly three hundred eighty thousand dollars. That amount alone, one percent could fund any of the following things here that I've listed, six classroom teachers. Our entire vocational tuition budget, five buses right on down the line, five times our professional development budget, right? So. I would just say one percent significant. And you know, and again, I, there's a lot of casual observers. But when you dig deep on what school budget, out of school budgets are built and what the application to decisions like this are. You know, you can see that are, these decisions are really having an adverse impact on our ability to to kind of meet the needs of our community. So um I do like to, I do like to point that out when I can. I I also wanted to add to, this is almost like a. Uh kind of a random point and I didn't know where to put it, so I'm gonna put it here. But in that same time, and I I I, we talked about vocation, vocational tuition and transportation for several years here. Uh it's very unusual for um this budget to be in a school department budget. It's usually in a municipal budget. Um but nonetheless. Because it's in a school budget and we're responsible for in this town. We've absorbed in those same seven fiscal years, a four hundred thousand dollar increase to our vocational budget. Right? Set another way, as I say on the bottom here, we have four hundred thousand dollars less buying power than we would have had otherwise. Right? So we have an average increase of two point three three percent over the last seven years, which is not even close enough to maintain level services. And then you look at things like this that we've just absorbed, we've just absorbed it. Right? We've had to make accommodations for this. Um and there's a couple of other examples I could have given. Uh also, but this is a kind of a significant one. We've also some revenue losses that we just absorbed. Um but we're, we're, we're kind of in a world of hurt. I mean, there's, there's a reason why we're in the position we're in right now. So this is my um. Kind of my dream slide, I guess. And this, this chart shows a lot of different things, right? It shows uh the budget history that we just talked about. So you know, average annual increase over the last seven fiscal years of um of uh two point. Uh three, three percent. And I asked myself, we did just a quick analysis of what would our, what would our operating budget look like? If we had an annual rate of growth of three percent, which I would argue is kind of the minimal standard to maintain level services. And with the power of compounding, of course, and with um just history, you'll see that today. If we had had a three percent rate of growth for the last seven years, we would have had an additional one point seven, seven, five million dollars in our budget. Now again, this is a bit of a dream slide, right? Cause it's, it's not happening. But it just shows you when you, when you uh year after year. Underfund a budget, by the way, not for any other, you know, not for sort of lack of interest or or desire to fund a budget, but just because of lack of resources. When you have a year after year underfunding of a budget, this is what happens. Right? In my opinion, we should have an additional one point seven, seven million dollars in our budget. And we don't, right? And so I just, it's another piece of evidence or kind of data to show. You know, there is a reason why we're making fairly draconian cuts this year. We've kind of hit, we've kind of hit a tipping point. Um and of course, never, never mind if we had a three point five percent annual rate of growth or four percent. And by the way, those amounts. That's not a lot. I mean, there are many, many towns that, you know, a, a three or four or five percent annual. Rate of increase is is not unusual, simply because there are real needs, you know, the needs that Katie talked about, the, the annual budget drivers. Um that make up even our, our level of services budget. So again, it's just data. Um to kind of illustrate why we're in the position we are, but I, I, I thought it was pretty fascinating when we ran this analysis. So some final thoughts. I think it's really important to talk, to say this clearly, this is only the very first step. Of what's gonna be a lengthy budget process. The culmination of our budget process every year is, is annual town meeting, which is the second Saturday in, in March. It happens to be, by the way, the earliest town meeting in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which is why our budget process is pushed up all the way into November. Usually it starts, um you know, January, February in most towns, but we, but Duxbury has an early town meeting. We have an excellent relationship with our municipal partners, town manager, finance director. We have good relationships with the finance committee, um board of selectmen, and we're, we're gonna continue to partner with them. With the hopes uh of improving this budget picture before town meeting uh in March. You know, I, I like to remain optimistic uh that things will get better. Um that being said, the exercise is the exercise, right? We needed to go through this exercise to show what a zero percent. Guideline and a level funded budget, you know, would lead to. And again, it's, it's not pretty. But I am optimistic and you know, we, we're in continuous dialogue already. Um and we're gonna have more dialogue, you know, over the next few months. Um and so I would just say. Don't panic, be patient, um but also we need to be realistic too, uh cause we, we, we don't have a. We don't have the most robust tax base available, so there, there are limited resources and there always are, you know. A kind of unlimited needs. My editorial comment is, I just think we need a new budget model. We do this every year. Um every year we ask ourselves as a town, you know, what we can't afford. And I just think we need to kind of flip that paradigm and, you know, start asking ourselves and start asking our community. You know, what level of services do you want in your schools? In your DPW, in your public safety, in your recreation. Let's try to figure that out and then let's try to create a funding stream. To meet those community needs, right? Now, it's much easier said than done. Because in the absence of new revenue, the only way to really create a, create a revenue stream um is by increasing taxes. And that's a, you know, um it, it tends to be a kind of this third rail topic and it just shouldn't be. You know, proposition two and a half, um you know, as a state law adopted. How old am I? Over forty years ago, forty years ago, I guess exactly. Um and it set a fairly arbitrary cap on raising property taxes, that cap being two and a half percent, hence the name Prop Two and a Half. And an override. Was built into the legislation and it's a mechanism that the state adopted to allow communities like Duxbury. To address structural deficits, right? We are gonna have a structural deficit every single year. When you consider what it costs to uh fund the level services budget in the municipality, and I'm not talking just school department, I'm talking any town department. When you have fixed cost, mandated cost. Just unavoidable costs, you know, because of the, the, the nature of our business, we are gonna have a structural deficit. When we're only, when we're capping taxes at two and a half percent. So again, I just think it's time to very. Rational, you know, non dramatic, non emotional conversations uh about, about the future. And let's find out, what do we want to be here in Duxbury? I'm pretty certain that our community doesn't want. Twenty seven kids in a class. I don't think they want twenty four kids in a class either. And so we are, we are on the cusp here uh doing some pretty significant, uh you know, damage uh to our, to our systems. And you know, final, and then obviously I'm. Uh sort of said this already, but you know, if, if, if we want to talk to your system, which I believe our residents do, and I think they deserve it. It just needs to be fun funded accordingly. You know, I'm saying, yeah, the do more, do more with less mentality. Can only, can only take you, can only take you so far. Our funding needs to be commensurate uh with those expectations. And I, I, I had a, my, my first boss um in this business, you know, now twenty five years ago. Used to say, you know, you're only in fourth grade once. All right, we owe it to our students. To do better. We can't wait any longer. Every year that goes by, we're doing them a disservice. So it's time, you know, I think it's really time to shift the conversation. And with that, we are done. And I just want to remind uh the community and you, what I said earlier is that all of this information and, and more. Will, you know, will be posted on this uh district website tomorrow, under the school committee tab, fiscal, fiscal year twenty two budget. Um and we'll also push it out to the community in a, uh in a, in an email blast. That is it for. The formal presentation. We'd be glad to answer any questions. Um I also, as relates to process. And Kelly, tell me if this is the right time. Um but we do have our, our chair of the finance committee uh in, in attendance tonight. And she is um. You know generously um offered to just give a little perspective on, on the town process. And kind of how they're approaching budgets this year. So Kelly, you say the word and I'll bring, I'll bring Miss Sullivan in.
Okay, let me just make sure school committee members don't have any other questions for what was just presented.
Um, yeah, I would, I would like, before we hear from the finance chair, I would like to uh comment. Just, you know, just for starters, I, I, I just want to personally. Express my gratitude to um to John and the administrators. And you know, to our faculty and staff. This is absolutely awful. Given the circumstances that we're operating and, and the, the challenges that our families are facing. To, to be continuing to discuss. Probably twenty years, but I know personally at least ten years of underfunding of the Duxbury Public School System. So given all of the demands that we're asking upon, you know, calling upon our teachers. And our, uh, our public school officials to ride the challenge, it's incredibly demotivating, I'm sure. And a very um disruptive to our culture that the community is asking the people that we're counting on to do more. To actually um do less with less resources. There are three hundred and fifty one municipalities in the Commonwealth. There seems to be a culture, not just in Duxbury, but in the country of denying facts. Duxbury is one of the most affluent communities in the Commonwealth. We're ranked number twenty eighth on um residential property value. We're ranked thirtieth on median household income. We are not a high tax community. In fact, Duxbury is in the bottom half of median residential property taxes paid in, in Duxbury. For ten years, the professionals that have run our schools. Have told us that the cost of inflation of schools is between three and four percent per year. We have chosen as a community to underfund our school year after year after year. And there's nostalgia for the schools that their people, many in this community say, well, our schools are great. They were great when my kids went to the schools. They've gone to great colleges and they've been successful. We had a national search to recruit our last two superintendents. Who are we to judge? And to tell them that they don't actually know what it takes to run a, a high quality school district. So for Duxbury to be in the top ten percent of affluence, in the bottom half of taxes paid. And to be in the bottom third of per student spending. Like parents, is this, what's, what's wrong with us? Is this a community that we, we stand for? And I know, John, I appreciate you said. Don't be emotional, but it's just hard to take. And I think as a, as a community. You know, are we gonna, are we gonna say, well, we've given the schools all the resources that we can. And it's good enough and they should just take the resources that we're providing. Um or are we going to walk the walk, provide the resources we need? We have top rate administrators, professionals, faculty, staff, teachers that are committed. To providing the opportunities for our students. I feel like we're not giving them the support that is just basically required for them to be able to uh deliver. So um I just, without getting on my soapbox more than I already am. Another complete misunderstanding of the overs and, and, and the notion, John set up the discussion very clearly. Nineteen eighty, the law was passed to limit raises in property taxes. Again, Duxbury is a complete outlier. I looked up the data since nineteen eighty, there have been one thousand seven hundred and sixty two prop two and a half. Operating overrides approved by town voters. Works out to be forty four overrides per year. Or on average, one override per community every eight years. Duxbury hasn't done one in forty years. Just to give you an idea, our neighbors, Marshfield has done seven. Situate has done four, Cohasset has done ten, Kingston has done six, Hingham has done four. Norwell has done four. Duxbury has had a single operational override in forty years. What's wrong with us? Seriously, do we believe in, in providing the opportunity for our faculty and staff to? Uh you know, support the schools to the level of our resources or not? But the story that our taxes are high is false, that we don't have the resources is false. Do we have the will? But I, I think, I think um it's hard not to be emotional. Cause you know, the challenges that our, our schools are, are facing um have never been greater. The demands we're asking of our teachers and our administrators and staffs, it's never been more challenging. We're asking to cut their budget. I mean, it's just, it's like, what kind of a community are we? So anyhow, that's, I say there's a call to action. If, if, if we need to mobilize as parents, um as a community, I don't think this is a parent issue. I think it's a community issue. Enough, enough. We're a low tax community that's under investing in our public education. Is that what we stand for?
I um. Go ahead, Kelly.
I just, you win the night, like you articulated it absolutely perfectly. So bravo.
I think it also bears adding to what Peter said, uh that parents are already stressed out about how well their children. Are not learning this year in the hybrid model. Uh and some are fully remote. And here we are um presenting them with a budget that. Basically draws a picture of more students in classrooms with fewer teachers. Uh and you know, many parents are hoping that next year will be a year for their children to catch up. And get back into the swing of full in person learning, uh but with a reduction of. Uh seventeen point three FTE, that's not um really what we're offering with this budget. Which is a real shame in the context where we are.
Totally agree. Okay, anybody else?
I'm gonna go get a drink of water. I'm mad.
How about, how about a shot, Peter? Okay, um well, John, Danielle, Katie, thank you. Um not a fun exercise, but a necessary exercise and um. So John, do you want to pivot to finance committee?
Yeah, I just, it just, uh, just give her a moment and um.
Yeah.
Let's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring you in here. All right, Betsy, can um. You're on here, how are you? You're muted.
Nope, better.
There we go.
Well, um interesting selection of where I'm, I'm coming in. Um that was a. But I asked, so I will, I will take that. Um great presentation, thank you so much. Um we are faced with a miserable year. Um whether it be the school department, the DPW, anything, anything and everything. It's uh, we have a, a year where we uh. Are have a challenging year in anticipating revenues. Um we have a challenging year in anticipating additional costs that COVID has brought. Uh and the, we had to find a baseline. We had to find a place to start. And what we did was we went to all the town departments and. and said, you all have to go through the painful and horrible exercise of what does it look like? If you get no more money for next year, zero based. And I, I wish that your team could teach this exercise because they've done a magnificent job. We cannot present the problem unless we have the data and the repercussions of doing what the dollars that we can count on will allow us to do. So we've asked everybody, we have this now, we are going to get all the other departments pulled together. And then we have the story that we can deliver to the community and say, this is what this means. And at the end of the day, it's not the Finance Committee, it's not the School Committee, it's not the Selectment, it's the Town Meeting that decides. And the community that decides as has been presented and has been said in, in very convincing terms. We would not want you to leave here tonight thinking that we are cavalier enough to think that this is, your, your department isn't a priority above other departments. Our, our understanding and the direction that the Selectment have given us and the, and the opinion of this, the Finance Committee is that there are essential services. The schools and public safety. And if indeed we have to meet a number that we all are fearful of or despise, then we have to make sure that they get enough to be successful or at least functioning. And that other departments that are important to people and you're going to see, you know, as passionate as this group is for the schools, there are groups that are just as passionate for fill in the blank. But we are going, we have gotten the support of the Selectmen that essential services have to be prioritized. But we needed the story and, you know, thank you, Katie, thank you. You know, Danielle and John, you have given us the story in a, a very deliverable fashion. It's not so complex that people are going to get lost in the weeds, but it is very clear and it is a miserable story. And, and I don't say that to make, it, it's just a miserable story. There's, there's no other way to look at it. We're going to be working to get the rest of the, the departments at a similar, at a zero based. And then the hard work is going to come that on how we can manage through, based on what we have. I mean, obvious, it's blatant, it's not going to be enough. So then what do we do? And then what will the town and the community support us in doing? But this was a first step. There is no intent by the Finance Committee and to the best of my knowledge from the Selectmen to leave you out to dry on this. We get it. Your essential services. And they have to be considered and they have to be prioritized. But this was the first step and thank you so much for taking it because it was a ton of work and certainly no fun to listen to and no fun to put together. That's all. I just didn't want this to be a meeting where you all got this message and, and thought that that was what anybody expected to be the end result. And I just felt it was important. It is a bit like walking into the lion's den, but I have to go face my daughters as well. So you guys are nothing compared to that. But we will, we'll work with you. We want, John and Katie and Danielle have been amazing partners and I would not have said that five years ago. And we've come so far and working together and trying to figure this out. So thank you for all your help. That's it.
Thanks, Betsy.
Unless anybody has questions for me, which, you know, I can try, but won't guarantee that I'll be able to answer, but I can certainly try. Going, going, gone?
Thanks, Betsy, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay.
So it is time. I see that we have about 200 people on, so I'm going to read our public comments. Guidelines. Duxbury's Public School Committee welcomes public comment and participation at school committee meetings. There's an opportunity during the meeting for members of the community to address issues of concern about policy, budget, administrative matters, or simply share ideas about how we can work together to improve the Duxbury Public Schools. We value your input and respect divergent views. We only ask that you limit your remarks to two minutes and refrain from airing grievances about individual members of the school committee or the school community. And I always reiterate, my personal thing is everyone keeps it respectful, which is usually not a problem. And if the comments start becoming repetitive, then I'll probably just move on and close the meeting. So if you have a public comment, which I'm guessing we have some, if you could use your raise hand feature. And to do that, if you go down the bottom where it says participants, you click on that, there'll be a raise hand feature.
Okay, do you want me to just start calling, Kelly?
Yes, and let me say one more thing. I just want to make it, public comment is not a Q and A with the school committee. So we will listen to your comment, but we, we will, there won't be a dialogue about it. Okay.
Okay, we have Kevin and it comes up as Kevin and Jill Huey. Hello. You're on mute. If you can unmute. Okay, I'll come. I will come back to them. Peyton Conley.
Hi, how you doing? Um, my question or I guess comment is just about the IEP cuts. Kelly brought up a point, I believe, about the legal aspect. And I'm just wondering how you guys are going to decide like who is, I think Danielle, you said like the most important or the most in need? Because I have to assume that, that most of their parent, parents feel like their kid is most in need. Did I misunderstand that? Okay. Can I just have like, so, so what was, what was my misunderstanding then? In the IEP, when you said that there was kind of a certain order and you would obviously help all children. I did hear that part. But how do you?
Okay, let me, okay, thank you.
Do you want me to respond to that, Kelly, or?
Danielle, is there a clarification to be made from the presentation?
We would never prioritize student IEP based on who we think is most in need. IEP services are legal, binding services based on the IEP. And so when we look at, when we look at reductions to our special ed department, we may be looking at larger small group support size. And we may be looking at scheduling limitations based on the number of classes we can support. But we would never be prioritizing which students would receive services or not. That may be the case. I think maybe you're confusing that when I said there were reading specialist supports who support general education students who are not on an IEP, who may have some reading weaknesses, but not based on their IEP.
Okay, next, Katie Dean.
Hi, thank you so much for your time. I just had one quick question in regards to the, the major cuts. Obviously, all parents are very concerned about their children's education. My children, I'm lucky enough that they are not on IEPs, but they are still behind as evidence from their parent teacher conferences. So I was just curious to know, given that you are going to cut 18 staff, core of those being teachers, and students are already behind. I was just curious to know if administration was considered in the cuts? And if they were and decided not to be cut, I was curious to know why. Just because I feel like teachers are crucial, especially going into next year when kids need all the help they can get to get caught up. So I know, I know it's hard to make the decisions, but um, some clarification around that would be helpful for probably parents and maybe teachers as well. Thank you so much again for your time.
Sorry, everything's on the table every, every year. We've actually made significant, we've done a significant restructuring over the last four years in our business office and our technology department as well. So everything's on the table every year, but this particular budget, this is where it settled. Kristen O'Connell. Sorry, I made a mistake. Kristen O'Connell.
Hi, I'm, I wanted to just express my feelings about the response to the letter that was submitted from the Student First Duxbury Full Time In-Person Education Group. I guess we did not feel that our question was fully answered with the meeting in October. And more importantly, we really want to come together as a group to find a transition plan to help our kids get back to school. And we understand that there are communities around us that are going in the red. However, there are communities around us also that are trying to bring their kids back to school. Dover, Pembroke, Westwood being examples. In addition, East Bridgewater just came out with a draft-based reopening. In addition to that, Governor Baker said that specifically, it's not the kids that are causing the problems and schools should not be considered. Or academic buildings are showing not to be the super spreaders. And it's hugely important for the educational and social development of kids and psychological development of kids that they be back in school. Danielle brought up a lot of social emotional learning for the children. Personally, I'm a physical therapist and when all this went down, the first two things I was concerned about was the mental wellbeing of our children, children as well as the physical wellbeing. And with physical wellbeing, considering the increase in sedentary lifestyle, type 2 diabetes, obesity, all those concerns. And I understand that COVID is a real issue and I just feel like we do need a plan to get these kids back in school. And there is no definitive plan for that. So what I'm looking for, and I think what the group was hoping for is just some task force or more open communication about a transition plan that has data, it's data-driven, it has numbers that can show us exactly when these kids are going to be allowed to get back in school. So I feel like I appreciate the quick response to that email that was sent out. However, we did look at those, the tape of that other previous meeting and we just felt that there needed to be more definitive answers. And just some numbers to give us an idea of where you're at and when these kids can potentially get back to school.
Kelly, do you mind if I comment on that?
I do not mind at all. You were muted for a minute.
I know, I'm sorry. Ms. O'Connell, thank you very much for the comments. I appreciate that. So a few things. It's, it strikes me that maybe I wasn't clear enough at that October 21st presentation, although I have repeated this many, many times publicly and otherwise, but I can't wait for the day we can get these kids back to school fully in person. I've said that numerous times. It is everyone's goal. It, it, it truly is. So we're on, we're on the same team in that regard and I, and I appreciate everybody's kind of passion around it. But I, I, I hope what came out of that October 21st presentation was that it's not the right time now. The numbers aren't trending in the right direction. We very honestly are scrambling to survive every day here in the school department. We have massive staffing issues. We have several hundred kids, 200 to 300 kids who have been quarantined. We've had eight cases. We are, we are truly, and I've used this term in the past and I don't mean to be redundant. We are truly hanging on by a thread right now. I feel like we're doing well under the circumstances, but it is a, it is a massive challenge. I also want to say, and I know I said this on October 21st, hybrid model is the worst model for our teachers to be in right now. They, their bandwidth is being tested. They are at a tipping point. Operationally, it's the most challenging model. It would be far easier for us to be fully in person. It'd be far easier actually to be in full remote, maybe even, even more easily. So we're just hanging on. So it's not, it's not the right time now. What I should have said at October 21st is we do have a plan. We, Danielle and I have already begun conversations with our, with our teachers and our teachers association about kind of like very rough timelines and, and what, what pathway do we have to get kids back in school? We have a fully crafted and drafted plan, at least for the primary grades right now. And, you know, at some point soon, I think we should talk about that at the school committee level. But it's not the right time now. It's just not. So I, I just want to reiterate that we, we, we do have a plan. We have the expertise. We do know what other districts are doing. I also want to make the point. We have to operate within our own constraints. We have significant space constraints. We have significant financial constraints. We have significant staffing constraints. And we have a cultural norm now where six feet social distancing is the only acceptable distance. And for us to get back in school right now, we can't, we can't meet that social norm. We don't have the space. And I know those other districts, actually you mentioned my former district. I helped build the Westwood Public Schools. You know, that their budget is $10 million more than the Duxbury Public Schools budget for the same population of students. They have five neighborhood schools that are significantly under enrolled. Right? So I know how they're rolling out their plan. It, it's a pipe dream for us to lay out Westwood's plan. And by the way, they get back to school about three weeks later than we did. So I would just say, I, I just caution you to read too much into what other districts are doing because all we can do is control us. I, I, I can't, I can't create space here. I can't create staffing. So I just want to say that. And so if I didn't do a good enough job on October 21st, I apologize. We are on the same team. I am fully with the, the people who signed on to that letter. I cannot wait to get back. But I can't make false promises. It's not now. I do think in the next few weeks, we can start having conversations about a timeline, but there's a lot of work to do. And I'm going to make one final point. The data around kids is accurate. Kids aren't dying. Okay, but kids are catching the virus. But what we're missing here, and I've talked about this many, many times publicly, you know, the newspaper, I've been very blunt about it. We need to remember that we have 450 employees in our building. Okay, so it's our job to educate students. It's also our job, our primary job to protect the health and safety of our students and our staff. Okay, and we cannot disregard our staff's safety. All right, it is a significant problem. And I, I'd also say, we're not doing a good job in this community right now outside of school. The reason that it's not spreading in school is, is because schools have done a good job with social distancing, with PPE, with a whole host of other operational improvements. This community right now is not doing a good job outside of school. So we need to kind of collectively start changing our behaviors in town outside of school so that we can get back to school. Right? So with that being said, it's not now. It's not now. We have, we have reports every single day, quite literally, of parties, large group gatherings, a whole host of other very risky behaviors. And so I am not prepared to put my staff in jeopardy until we get control of that. So please be patient. We are on the same team. We're on the same page, but it's not November. You know, it might be, it might be in the winter, but it's not November. So that's much longer than I wanted to talk and I appreciate everybody listening. But I just felt I had some, some points to make. Next is Kay Leahy.
Hi, Mr. Antonucci and board. I appreciate your time. My comment also pertains to the letter, but it's a little bit more in describing our feeling as parents and the lack of role that we feel we're allowed to play. So earlier on this call, you mentioned that Duxbury demands a high level, high tier education. So earlier on this call, you mentioned that Duxbury demands a high level, high tier education. I certainly could not agree anymore with you. But in my opinion, you are missing that high level mark by refusing to allow parents a voice and a seat at your table. On Monday, as you know, you received a letter signed by over 300 parents. Requesting a voice in the discussion pertaining to getting our children back in school more than two days per week. Your response, or actually a lack thereof, is concerning to parents, including myself. In my opinion, you are creating a non-inclusive space. In parents making monumental decisions for our children. And I ask this of you, Mr. Antonucci and the board, would you be okay with this response as a parent if you had children? In this school system, we as parents deserve a spot at your table to advocate for our children. When it comes to a hybrid model versus a full. A full remote versus full in school. We deserve a spot at your table. We deserve a voice. And we feel as though we have been neglected and being granted that voice.
Thank you. Laurel Deacon.
Hello, Dr. Antonucci and the committee. I want to thank you first for the presentation that you gave tonight. To say that is a disingenuous state of affairs is an epic understatement and I want to second Peter and Julia's comments. All I can do at this point in the seat I sit in as a parent for now. Is to share that I intend to do absolutely everything in my power to mobilize my peers and my community to begin work now to advocate on the behalf of the budget. And to show up to vote when the time comes. So I will leave that there. A few weeks ago, as was promised in the beginning of the year, a survey was sent out to gather feedback from families in our district about how things are going in the current model. As a parent, I was grateful for this opportunity because I knew in my own family and based on conversations with my peers who have primarily elementary age students. We were really struggling and it was significantly impacting our families and our children's ability to learn. This survey felt like a genuine opportunity to engage with the district on this topic and potentially open up a conversation about challenges. And how we might work together to improve the situation for everyone involved. Fast forward to the school committee on October 21st and the district outlined public health data and metrics that come into play. When making the decision regarding the appropriate learning model. Dr. Antonucci highlighted that no decision will be made without significant input and collaboration from multiple stakeholders. Including the school committee, DTA, town officials, local board of health, and finally, families. The presentation highlighted data points from DESI and DPH and other factors that would be considered regarding testing and spread. However, the presentation did not include any information about how families and their children are experiencing the situation that I had hoped would have been gathered from the surveys. There was also not any mention of the research and information regarding what is best for our children based on age and need that has been published since the public health crisis began. This is the reason that I signed that letter requesting a call to action to the school committee to convene a task force to engage with all stakeholders, including parents. To review all of the information that's available to us right now in the current context. Including in-person learning models and other districts similar to DPS. To determine the best plan for the most effective learning model for DPS going forward.
John, I think you're on mute. You might have called out Mike McGee.
And I'm here.
Sorry, Mike.
It's fine. Thank you for your time tonight. I think we're all running on fumes, so I'll keep it brief. And this is a message for the teachers that are out there. I'm very troubled by, even though this is a baseline budget. It is woefully inconsistent with the community's demand for the best education for our children. And as a parent and as a member of this community. I have been seeing what the teachers are going through and I personally like to say thank you. We see what you're doing, the sacrifices you're making. From putting your health at risk to making monetary sacrifices for supplies, childcare for your own children. So thank you and know that it angers me that on top of all your sacrifices, you're enduring this budget presentation, albeit necessary. Finally. Dr. G for acknowledging the letter and the paper. I'm hopeful that as the school committee and school department assesses whether our district can expand in-person learning. They strongly consider partnering with other parents on this important issue. And if you do, I'm happy to help. So thank you.
I just want to make the point, I know I made several, but. You know, the decision to return in person is really strictly operational. We have a plan. I could execute it tomorrow, quite literally. If we didn't have operational issues, right? It's space. It's resources. It's social distancing and what have you. So no matter what the opinion. Or the committee or what have you, or all the brains at the table. Those are issues that we have a full grasp on and they're not going away, no matter how many. Meetings or discussions we have about it. So I can't, I'm sorry to be blunt, but I just don't know how else to say that. They are very legitimate, very real issues and what happens in other districts has zero bearing. On us. What happens next door does not mean that I have extra space. Or extra staff. You know, we have a pretty good handle on this. We, we have a lot of exceptional administrators who have given their entire career to. To school department. So I just want to make that point. It really is an operational. Going, going remote is more about health data and the metrics. Going in person is more about. Our infrastructure and kind of operational issues. It's certainly not a lack, lack of desire. So I'm going to go to. Keith and Christine Lentini.
Hi, Dr. Antonucci and the board. Thank you very much. I'm part of the same group that sent the letter. And I just want to talk about the comments you made, doctor, that. It sounds like, it sounds like you guys have a handle on what you want to do at the administrative level. But I think the parents just want to be included in that process and that could be beneficial to everyone. If you have parents, include them as stakeholders. And just present that information to them directly. I think disseminating. The information in your plan soon rather than later will help everyone. Kind of make their decisions and, and think about this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Two things on that. We're not ready to do it and it's not, it's not the right time and although I do appreciate the anxiety and the. Anxiousness, I should say, to get that and I respect that. But this is the forum, actually. I mean, so we, you know, we happen to have jobs where we do our business in public and this is where. Parents can get involved and parents can give input and parents can kind of be at the table, among other things, you know, we have school councils and we have. Surveys and what have you. So I love the fact that we have, you know, 230 people on this call tonight because. I don't like to, you know, speak into a vacuum and so it's wonderful. Wonderful, but all our kind of major policy and operational and budgetary decisions. This is, you know, this is where it happens. I mean, statutorily, this is actually where, where it happens. So. You know, this, I would, I would encourage everybody to kind of stay tuned. Anything we do moving forward will happen here at the school committee level. That's it, Ms. President.
Okay. And I just want to say, I, you know, I have a high school senior and it's a disaster. And she's been quarantined in a room and she can't go back to school until November 10th because of a contact because somebody got COVID. Outside of school. We can't visit colleges. There's a whole lot going on. I have a middle schooler also. I would love to have my kids in school full time. So we totally feel your pain and we get it. We just cannot change the reality right now. And I think as a board, you know, we, we hire Dr. Antonucci to make these decisions for us. So. As far as a task force goes at this time. We, I don't think we are entertaining a task force, but I do love the involvement. And let me tell you, I have, you know, my oldest is 21 and I've been involved in the schools forever. I'm kind of a dinosaur now. And I showed up at school committee meetings and I signed letters and I spoke at the microphone. And I so applaud everybody being involved. I just think right now we are in an ugly pandemic and it's. Feudal for a lot of people, but I feel that Dr. Antonucci and his team are doing everything in their power. To do the best they can for our kids. And I say it week after week, the staff and teachers, which most of you or all of you have acknowledged. Are giving 150% and we are so fortunate. And we have a wonderful relationship with the Duxbury Teachers Association, which a lot of districts don't have and they've had problems from day one. So we will continue to move forward in the hopes that we can get our kids back full time.
Kelly, if I, if I could just have a brief comment as well, I think it is, I mean, everyone feels the pressure. Of time slipping away, but if you think about where we've been. Duxbury was one of the first districts in the Commonwealth to actually have students back in the building. The amount of effort expended between March. And September 7th or whenever it was that our students got back into the building was not normal, right? I mean, it was, I think, you know, all of you haven't really stopped working as well as many of our teachers. The priority was how did that go? And if you recall at the. One of the early meetings, whether it was the first week in October or late September, we discussed as a group. Would it be possible for the district to establish some high level metrics under which they would look at? Return to in person or return to remote. That presentation was. Provided to us and also to the community on the 21st. We discussed on the 21st. The question of would we treat all of our students the same? And in fact, Dr. Antonucci and Dr. Klingman said, no, in fact, we will prioritize. The students that have the most negative consequences of being remote, we will prioritize them first. And I think. John and Danielle, you could just confirm. We are with you that the K through two is the highest priority for our district to return as much as possible in person. Or be the last to leave if we have to flex to more remote. So I just think that's really. But that wasn't even on the table, the 21st. It was please now take this into the consideration that you have an overall plan. They haven't presented their thoughts to the school committee and I think the parents just need to recognize. What they're, we're on this. They're developing the plans. They're discussing it with. You know, they're in contact with other schools. They're discussing it with our faculty. They're looking at the physical plan. So. So I think when you think about the timeline here, we're progressing very much in the same direction, but last week. Duxbury at 8.2 new cases per 100,000 residents, 8.02. Technically, we're over eight. I don't know why we weren't red. The week before we're 8.0, but if you actually look at the data. We were above eight last week. I went with my wife walking a dog over the weekend and I'm not going to point fingers, but. There were large numbers of Duxbury Elementary School students and middle school students engaged in youth sports activities. In a way that's not consistent with the way the schools are trying to operate. So I think we're fighting. You know, our cases are going up. The cases are going up in Duxbury. They're going up in the Commonwealth. They're going up nationally. We have alignment of interest to try and prioritize the youngest learners. But I don't think it's beneficial for parents to take a you're not being heard stance. You are being heard. Our administrators are taking action. But I think you have to recognize it isn't going to happen at the pace you'd like to see, but there's really good. Justification for that. And the school committee has a responsibility to review the plans and interface with the administration and provide. Advice and consent where needed. And I think we're all open to public input. All of us have spoken to many. Parents that have a variety of challenges. The administrators and also faculty are very much engaged with our parents. So I think it. Is not great for a large number of parents to say that the school administration is not being. Open to and or inclusive of parent input. It's perhaps not in the form which you'd prefer, which is a task force with a broad. Base of participation, but don't mistake. The. Content, you know, context with the lack of parental input. There's many, many opportunities for parents. Voices to be heard and they are being heard, quite frankly. And I think the responsiveness of our administration is really clear at that. So I just want to say. We're on the same page, but you may not like the answer we're coming to collectively at where we are right now. And I think you just, we appreciate the input. We're all of us are open to it. None of us are not going to take your phone calls or try and respond to emails when you write to us. But we're on the same, same side. So please be respectful for. Again, you may not like the outcome, but the process is very inclusive of parental input. The district doesn't operate without input from parents. So I think we're, we're doing the best and our administrators are doing the best, but they also, you know, are trying to keep the schools as. Dr. Antonucci said, operating in the way that they're operating now. We're hanging on by a thread.
Kelly, may I just say one quick thing? Just to, just to amplify a couple of the points that, that Peter made. I think the perspective that I'm sort of taking from this is, you know, first of all. I'm, I'm really hearing and I have been hearing a lot of the comments that the community's been making. And I agree with you in terms of, you know, the anxiety that you. Definitely, that I'm sure you feel. I mean, I feel the same anxiety. I've got a, I've got a son at Alden and there's nothing more that I, you know. That I would love for him to be back in, in school because I worry about what's happening within this year. And then I worry about what the trailing effect's going to, going to be with him. For the, you know, the continuation of his schooling after this ends. I don't know like what the long-term repercussions are going to be. I don't think any of us do. That's a real big problem. What I would say though is. It, it seems to me that what, what, what I'm hearing you guys are saying is that you don't feel like you're involved in. The decision-making and you're being shut out. And I can understand how some people would feel that way, but I think that, I think the reality is, is that. The, the, the request that I read in the letter and that I'm, what I'm hearing from some of you guys is that you want to have a task force and a seat at the table. And that's just not the, the medium right now that I think is realistic. For us to, to put a plan together to eventually get the kids back in school. And I would, I would also say with, with all due respect. It's certainly not going to happen on November 18th. So you know, I might have misread the letter, but I can, once again, I agree with you. My. My sincere wish is that sooner rather than later, all of our children can be learning back in school because that is the only way. That is like the best, the best way to learn. But putting a task force together presumes that we're not. Listening to the community, listening to the experts and thinking about ways in which we can get to that point when it's realistic to get to that point. We will get to that point when it's realistic, but the reality right now is that outside. The coronavirus is going in the wrong direction. You know, the cases are going up. We are on the bubble of being in the red. So I mean, it, it sounds empty and it sounds hollow and I know, I know it's not what you want to hear to say like, okay. We, we're on it. We are, you know, we, we are laser focused on it while we're also laser focused on the operational. You know, realities that the school has like Dr. Antonucci said. So I guess just to sort of end it, I would say that. No one's being shut out. It's not any of our wish to want to shut anyone out. But the medium of putting a task force together with parents and everything with the intent of, okay. We've got to come up with all of these great ideas to get the students back in. I just don't think it's realistic and I don't think it's like, I don't think it's a scalable model right now. So I just, I don't want anyone to misunderstand. I don't want you to leave this meeting thinking like, okay, all these decisions are being made from an ivory tower. And no one's being involved. I just don't think that that's the case.
Thanks, Matt. Okay. John, we have one more hand and then I'm going to say that's it.
Danielle Bryan, I guess.
Danielle Bryan?
Hey, I was wondering, how many students who have been forced into the 14-day quarantine after a potential close-contact exposure transitioned to a positive COVID state? And what data supports forcing our kids out of school for two weeks if they're socially distanced beyond the recommended three feet and they're wearing masks? Thank you.
Yeah, that wouldn't be data that we could share or even that I'd even be privy to. But as far as the close contacts, I mean, six feet is a guideline, and we are not perfect. You know, even with half the population, you know, we're somewhere between, we're mostly six feet, let's say, on a regular basis, but there are times when it's three, at times when it's four, at times when it's five. And so we've had to kind of conservatively assign the close-contact designation in collaboration with the Board of Health. So, yeah, it's just a function of kids being kids and our fairly full buildings, even with half the population. There's one more, Kelly, maybe one final one?
Yep.
Laura?
Hi, I'm Laura Gago. I teach fourth grade at Alden. I'm helping our kids get through this tough time. You know, they're uncharted waters, and as someone who's been teaching for 20 years, started in Plymouth, there's nothing more that any of us would want, is just be in the classroom with the kids. But we understand all that's involved. And I just appreciate Dr. Antonucci thinking of us and our own situations. My husband is high-risk with dementia. My daughter just had a life-threatening surgery, a Whipple surgery. And so, yeah, we're people too, and I appreciate you thinking of the staff and the faculty and our health. Thank you all. Bye.
Bye, Laura.
Wow, thank you, Laura. Okay, we have no action items, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second. All in favor? Julia?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
And Kelly?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everybody. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. A good one.